2018, and the time is 7:07 PM. We are starting a little late tonight due to the workshop. The first item on the agenda is the roll call. Commissioner Rainey.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Commissioner Burks.
Present.
Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Present.
And I'm present. The next item on the agenda? Oh, well, are we not doing the? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. If you'll please stand. Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for this day and thank you for everything you've given us. Please guide and direct the elected officials here tonight as they make decisions for the citizens in this community and for the future of our community. Please be with all that are sick, and we lift them up to you, those who've lost loved ones, and God, you know what their needs are. We lift them to you, up to you. Guide us and direct us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any additions or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Fourth item is public hearing. And we have two items for tonight. Item 11A.
Resolution 25-18, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Tax map 42, parcel 78, 8.8 acres, 7329 Taylor Road. Owner, Tony Cavender.
Okay, do we have anybody here to speak on the matter? You may come up, state your name and your address, and make any comments. Okay, nobody's here to speak on the matter? Okay, we'll move on to 4B.
Resolution 26-18, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Tax map 21, parcel 61.22, 7.9 acres, Northwest Highway. Owner, Hudson Family Revocable Trust.
Okay, do we have anybody here to speak on the matter? If you would like to, please join us at the podium. Okay, we'll move on then. Item five, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens?
Yes, ma'am. Tonight, the first citizen is Ms. Eileen Brogan.
And if you'll please state your name and address again for the record. It's three minutes, just as a reminder.
Okay. My name is Eileen Brogan, and I live at 7106 Brush Creek Road South. And I'm here as president of Friends of Louie Nature Park. One of the items on your agenda for tonight is basically the consolidate, actually it's two items, but it's basically the consolidation of two boards into one. The Parks Commission and the Tree Board into one, being called the Parks and Landscape Board. And if the Board of Commissioners decides to do this, we would respectfully request that we continue to have representation on that board, as we have in the past on the park board. The reason being because, over the years, we've contributed thousands of dollars and thousands of hours of volunteer work for the park. Our members are very passionate about the park, and we would be more than willing and able to help do whatever it is that the Board of Commissioners asks that board to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Marshall Walker.
Okay, Mr. Walker, if you'll join us at the podium, repeat your name and address again.
Marshall Walker, 7229 Northwest Highway. And I signed up for the public comment, so I didn't stand up for the item 11B. So I'm just here to represent a few of the landowners around the annexation there. And so we just wanted to voice our opinion that our concern is that, once it's annexed, that it would be rezoned, and that more houses would be put there than would fit into the nature of the houses that are surrounding that area. So most of us are just concerned with that, so we wanted to share our opinion on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next item is awards and recognition. Did we have any more citizens? I'm sorry. Okay. Item six, awards and recognition. None tonight? Okay. Item seven, public announcements. I think we're having a little festival in the park that we might want to mention. Nature Fest is Saturday. Kickoff is at 10:00, and I think it runs to 4:00. Is that correct? If somebody could tell me? 5:00. 5:00, okay. So, love to see everybody come out. It's always a great turnout, so just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that is going on. So, any other that anybody can think of? Staff comments? Do we have any tonight? Staff? Item nine, approval of the minutes. And they're under a consent agenda, so we can go to item 10, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second. Any changes to any of the minutes or the work session? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11A, Resolution 25-18, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consents of the owner and incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Tax map 42, parcel 0.7.00, 8.8 acres, 7329 Taylor Road. Owner, Tony Cavender. I didn't mean to take that. I just kept reading. Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? I got a motion on the floor.
Move to approve.
Okay, we got a first, a second. Okay, last call for a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion dies.
Mayor, you had a second.
Oh, you said second? I thought you said wait a second. Okay. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, mayor. Do we have a representative here tonight? Mr. Collins, if I may, mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
As I recall, looking at the map, this butts up to property that's already been annexed into the city. I believe that was Mr. Mangrum owns the strip north of this, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And it butts up on the east to part that's already being requested as annexation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And are we going to annex that portion of the road? Or is that specifically left out?
There's no, Commissioner Burks, there's no discussion of annexing the road because the properties are contiguous. Therefore, the properties would be contiguous by property and not road access.
I just want to make sure that we don't accidentally annex that little piece of road, if that's what we, if we choose to approve it. Because I know we did not on the property north of that. It goes up to the road, but doesn't actually annex that portion of road.
That is correct. There's been no, there's been no request by the city to annex that road as a matter of making this eligible for annexation.
I didn't want to get a little bitty stretched that we, that problem that we have in other places in the city.
Yes, sir.
So from, I'm sorry, thank you. So from Northwest Highway down to, down Taylor Road, to where this piece of property is, that, that road is county road or city road? I mean, it looks like everything that would be on the left-hand side, if you're looking at that map, would be city property. Or is, am I not reading it correctly?
If we could zoom in, just, just to make sure we're all on the same page for that. I'm not aware of the city owning or having any requirement to maintain that portion of the road. All of the individual parcels were contiguous to each other without a requirement to annex the road to make them contiguous. So it's my understanding that the road is county, the properties are city. We have not annexed the road itself.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm getting at is the, the green line that's sort of in, you can really, it's hard to see it, but it's in the yellow there.
Yes, sir.
That runs up, it looks like, if you're looking at the parcel that's in question here, if you look above that to the north of it, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 separate tracks. Do you see that?
Yes, sir.
And the green line sort of runs up the middle of the road and then cuts off to the right.
Correct.
Do you see that?
Yes, sir.
So, from the point where that green line cuts off to the right down to the, to the end of the parcel that's being, that's potentially to be, that's asked to be annexed, is city on one side, county on the other side?
Yeah, it's actually, the green line delineates the city limits, city limits, and the roadway, although the green line is in the roadway, the city limits is only the parcels, it is not the roadway itself.
No, I understand that. That's what I'm getting at. I'm just, one side of the street is city, one side of the street is county.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, the issue I, the reason I bring that up is because there's a lot of places where that's the case throughout the city. And usually, it is short stretches like this, and then it comes down to, okay, you know, we go in and we do some paving, and we pave a portion of the street, and then there's a break in the paving because it's supposedly to be, supposed to be maintained in the county, then we pick back up with paving. It just seems like to me, when we make these types of decisions, that we should also consider taking responsibility for the roadway. I mean, because otherwise, you know, I can give you a number of examples. I think one is Northwest Highway in Dyson Lampley, where there's sections that we've paved, and then there's a section that's county, and then a section that we pave again. Instead of having just one continuous stretch of roadway that's being maintained, there's a dispute over who's actually, maybe not a dispute, but, you know, we're maintaining our part, and the county's not maintaining their part. However, we have citizens that still access that road or use that road to access their property. So it just seems like we're creating more of that same issue when we do this. It's just a thought. I don't know the answer. I mean, I don't know, I mean, if we don't want to take responsibility, that's fine. It just, you know, we're going to pave up to a point, I guess, if, when and if we pave Taylor Road, we're going to pave up to that point where the city, city boundary stops on one side of the street, and then leave the rest to the county?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Since there's no one here to speak to this, do we know why they're wanting to annex this property?
Well, I'm not sure, but really, I don't really think we're supposed to be voting if they're not here. I mean, have we changed that rule? I mean, we used to have, where they had to be here. Well, we did. You're shaking your head. We did. Okay, that's, that's what I need a clarification. So, we no longer are now requiring them to be here, so if there's a question, I guess we can't answer them. I'm not so sure that that's a good decision on our part.
Well, don't we have the right to table it until someone comes before us and tells us why they want to annex it?
I would say we would. Do you have anything you can share? Do you know any knowledge, Kristin?
Certainly, mayor. The application actually states that it's for the subdivision of one acre lots, similar to the development immediately north that, that we annexed in, the Kenny Taylor property that is being developed by Mr. Mangrum. It, so the, this piece of property, if it's annexed, will come in as RS40 for the purposes of creating six new one-acre, or slightly more than one-acre lots. So it will actually mirror the proposed development immediately north.
And, and this came in front of the planning commission and passed, what was the vote?
It was unanimously favorable recommendation to this board.
Okay.
If it is annexed in, it will come in as RS40, and then it will go to the planning commission for a subdivision plat, where it will actually carp up the, the property into the six lots.
Okay.
So the development in, north of that, is that Mr. Mangrum's also, or is that Mr. Cavender's?
It's Mr. Mangrum's, the five lots immediately north, and it, Mr. Cavender has the six, what will potentially be six lots, that's highlighted in yellow.
And so do we have any indication of what else they're developing around that? Do we have that? How many more houses are going in around there?
Immediately west is the Otter Creek. You can, you can see the yellow line, the diagonal line, just northwest of the yellow parcel. That property has been approved for the first two phases of Otter Creek Springs, which is a, it's about 35, 35 lots. And the portion that you annexed in, that's south of that diagonal line and adjacent to the yellow, should be coming before the planning commission for, for a future subdivision. We just haven't seen that, those later phases yet, so. It will all kind of be part of the same, same development.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kristin, do you know by chance, with the way that property is, is shaped, will it be six individual houses that all have individual driveways that attach to Taylor Road?
I believe so, yes. We have seen just a preliminary plat, because it hasn't been annexed in just yet. But, yeah, the, the property is large enough for more than the one-acre minimum lot size for that zoning, and there's more than adequate road frontage, so they'll, they'll be large lots, they'll be basically estate lots, with plenty of, plenty of room for, for dri, in fact, more room than the, than the five lots north, so. And just as a, an additional point, the Water Authority of Dixon County is planning on extending the two-inch Forest Main down from the, Mr. Mangrum's subdivision to the north there to serve these six lots. So it will be on public sewer.
Do we have any more discussions?
Mayor?
Yes.
One thing I would note is that, in a lot of the subdivisions, the larger ones we're approving, we typically ask that they're, again, we ask, they don't have to always put larger lots around the exterior to kind of give it the impression that they're larger lots when you're driving by, so it doesn't look like it's just a bunch of tiny houses put in there. And this helps accomplish that even more so. As you go down Taylor Road, you've got the bigger one-acre lots that kind of shield this potential subdivision, and it makes it feel like it, helps it fit into the general area and community better. So that's something we may want to think about.
Mayor, Taylor Road, one of those roads that we need to, we need to talk about a traffic study, and talk about how much traffic is on that road.
I agree. I think that was with the original Otter Creek. I mean, he was going to fix the roads and do the improvements, but when we cut down, it didn't get passed in, then all of a sudden, the road improvements. Now, he has to, Otter Creek has to have a traffic study, and he'll do whatever they recommend, but when you start and get these little pocket neighborhoods, it's going to affect the overall traffic, and if they're not built yet, they're not necessarily taking them in consideration, nor do we normally, if it's that small of a subdivision, require it. But when you run a slippery slope, when you start putting a bunch of little ones in that don't require the traffic study.
Well, one that, can the planning commission require a traffic study that includes all the homes or all the zoning we've approved?
Yes, they can approve what's, you could request for that to be done.
For the whole area, not just the subdivision they're building?
What's your input on that? Not for the smaller, it has to be.
Let me offer some, a suggestion, as it relates to traffic studies generally. When, when we're doing the traffic studies, as they're defined in the city's code and subdivision regulations, those traffic studies are largely limited to entrance and exit of the subdivision itself and the nearest points. From a city standpoint, my suggestion would be commissioned through a series of traffic studies, that the city pay for traffic studies of growth corridors, so we know what that is. A true traffic study, in the sense that we would need, in this instance, would really cover the, the old Nashville road corridor from Highway 100 to Taylor, north and south, and then Taylor Road, east and west, from Highway 100 down to the city limits on that. Because as we get into the planning of those, our traffic study, as we grow in those areas, should take into consideration potential growth for undeveloped property that may be developed in the future. As an example, if we're talking about a traffic study for here, what we will be more concerned with than the six or seven lots that are going to go on here are access points for lots or subdivisions that may be developed across the street, or some other things, so that we don't have offset intersections. An example would be right outside of City Hall, where you have McDonald's, Publix, Chester, and the MapCo. Those areas aren't conducive to positive traffic flow, because all of the intersection entrance and exits are offset. So you wind up crossing traffic in such a manner that's unsafe. If we were going to do a traffic study, my suggestion would be to go back and look at the funding for a corridor traffic study produced by the city, and then have developments be considered based on our traffic study for the whole area, rather than spot traffic studies that don't take into consideration future growth of adjoining properties.
Yeah, head Commissioner Burks.
Kristin, what are the requirements if he, if we don't annex this property? He says, I'm going to build in the county. Is he allowed to build on one-acre lots in the county?
Yes, the zoning's the same.
Okay. So, no matter what we decide, he can still build these homes?
Correct.
It's just, wouldn't be in the city?
If I can just add two points, as far as transportation, after Mr. Collins, there is proposed to be a left turn lane, a dedicated left turn lane on 100, based on the traffic study that was done last year for Otter Creek. That is a T-dot requirement that will, that will be required from 100, turning left onto Taylor. And then just immediately north of this highlighted yellow piece, there's that little strip, that's a 60-foot right-of-way, that will be a new road that goes into, that connects to Taylor. It'll be a 50-foot standard right-of-way, sidewalks, curb and gutter, the whole, you know, all the, all the city standards that we require for roads, that will go into the new subdivision behind it. So, as far as adequate access and transportation, I think it will be on the, it will be in good shape, basically.
Okay. And so when this comes in front of the planning commission, the planning commission could require all the same city standards, which would bridge that, any potential gaps? How many houses are in between, say, like Mangrum subdivision and this proposed annexation? Are there lots?
Mr. Kenny Taylor still has the, the large square on Taylor, and then there's five lots that are currently being developed for Mr. Mangrum. Then there is the 60-foot right-of-way that will become the road that will connect between Taylor and Otter Creek. And then this is the proposed six, well, what will be six lots, if it is annexed into the city.
I'm sorry, do you have your, your little pointer that you can, because I'm not doing very well understanding where you are?
Okay.
Could you come on up?
I mean, I, I don't want to be banned away. I probably can't reach the screen anyway. Okay. Okay. So this is the property that's proposed for annexation. It's about eight, eight acres, a little more. This is the 60-foot right-of-way that is owned, it's part of this piece of property that will be, that will be developed as Otter Creek, in conjunction with this, which has already been approved by the planning commission. So Mr. Cavender owns all of this and this, and he's proposing to turn this into a standard city road, again, with five-foot sidewalks on either side, curb and gutter, to meet the requirements. These are the five new lots that Mr. Mangrum is doing as part of the Kenny Taylor subdivision. Mr. Kenny Taylor still lives here. And just up this way is, of course, Highway 100, and there will be a dedicated left turn lane off of 100 onto Taylor, which is to help alleviate, or provide more access to the subdivision, so.
And how wide is Taylor Road through there?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but...
It's narrow.
It, it's, it's narrow in places.
And no shoulders, no, no anything?
No, that's correct.
But to put that turning lane, would they have to widen the road a certain percentage, I would think?
Up, up here, yes. There will, there will be right-of-way dedication and...
But it only goes so far into Taylor?
And then, this is the other access point that goes into Otter Creek, and that will be, it's going, it's going to be, again, a standard city entrance with sidewalks on both sides that will feed into the, into the subdivision, and all those roads, of course, will be city standard, 50-foot right-of-way with curb and gutter and sidewalks.
The, the new roads, but not Old Nashville Highway? Old Nashville Highway will remain the, the narrow road that it is, until we widen?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the roads to get to those city requirements are still narrow, and no shoulders? Okay?
Okay, if we don't have any other discussions, we have a motion on the table. So I'll go to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Okay. And my vote's aye. Let me get back to where I was. 11B, Resolution, Resolution 26-18.
Resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Tax map 21, parcel 61.22, 7.9 acres, Northwest Highway. Owner, Hudson Family Revocable Trust.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a first. Do we have a second? Got a first, do we have a second?
Where does? I'll second the motion.
Didn't you first, were you the first?
No.
Oh, you're the first, sorry. I didn't look up. Okay, so we got a first and second. So you had some discussion, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, is this, again, the green, the green, is that the city, city boundary? It's hard to see, but... Kristin, you have your pointer still?
No, sure, that's, that's not correct. The city limits... The road is in the city limits. Northwest Highway itself is in the city limits in this scenario.
Okay, so I'll, I'm...
No, there, there are no properties on either side, it's just the roadway itself. It was annexed as a part of the Brownland Farms development a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So Northwest Highway in its entirety is in the city limits. The actual residential developments from there are Lot Number 43, I believe it is, in Poston Place, or 48, as you see on the corner, and then everything that are in stable acres. Those, those properties are all in the city limits. And then the Northwest Highway pavement is in the city limits.
Okay. So that, to illustrate my point, this was done a little differently than what some of the more recent annexations have been done, just because of the Brownland Farms.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We've actually annexed the entire road.
Yes, sir.
So we don't have that issue with this particular road that we would have with some of the others, in terms of the breaks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just a few questions on... This for me, Kristin, it's gonna be to you. So the entrance is off of Northwest Highway?
Yes, that's correct.
It looks so similar to what the Seaborn property off of Cox, I was making sure I was clear on what it is.
Where, where is the entrance?
Well, right now, it's just an undeveloped piece of property, so this is, this is the, the main road frontage. There's not, there's just a driveway back in here that doesn't, doesn't serve as a, it's not a city street, so this would be where any, any new, if there were to be new lots, that's where they would, that's where they would front.
So the 5.1 acre and the 2.54 acre, is that all also undeveloped?
No, there's a, you can see there's a house here, and then there's a house here. But, and they, they come off of, you can see the driveway to Northwest.
Obviously, it's coming in as RS40, was, what's the plan for future zoning, do you know?
Don't know. I believe it's just for single-family dwellings. Mr. Bloodsoe is here.
Yeah, he's here, he can answer.
If I could, for, just for clarification, as far as abutting the city, it butts Poston Place on the south also. That driveway is, is actually an easement to the properties to the west, the Joneses and the Davidson's. It's not a right-of-way for this property, so that's not on the table. All the access will be on Northwest Highway. According to city regulations, it comes in as RS40. I have no plans for anything more dense than that. Sewer is not available, I already have a letter from Michael Rogers from WADC saying that they don't have to, the sewer's not there, so we're in the process of doing soil testing now. So soil testing by nature will not lend itself to any more dense development.
And you were planning on, I think in the Planning Commission, this is just splitting up your property for family or future?
Well, that was on there, that's, that's a possibility, that's not set in stone.
Okay.
I have three sons.
Yeah.
That, that is a possibility, but that's not, like I said, that's not set in stone. We could sell lots, we could build and sell, but we're looking at maybe three, at, at most four lots. If you look to the north, I don't know if you, if you got a larger picture, if you pan down, the lots to the north of that, it's gonna be real similar to that. And those are, were done in the county, all on septic, sewer's not available. I don't think it's good for the neighborhood, I don't think it's good planning for the city. If we had to run sewer down there, and run the cost of, we'd have to put in a street that would be adopted by the city and be a city street to be maintained. I think the best thing for the neighborhood and for the city and for my purposes is to do whatever we can on the sewer and have all of them front Northwest Highway.
Okay.
So it's comparable to both, like you just said, to both what's to the north and across the street?
Yes.
Yes.
Bloodsoe? How much is this actual, the larger chunk versus, what size is that versus that, that tail end?
I'm not certain. There's, I'm guessing that little leg out to the south is probably an acre. I think it was probably left that way. This is all part of the, the former property where Poston Place sits now, and I think that was possibly left that way, just out of the outside chance somebody might want to try to access us that way. But I'm guessing maybe an acre back there.
Really, we're looking more like a seven-acre spot? Because I assume you're not gonna try to stick a house down in that little tail or something?
It would be odd-shaped lot. More than likely, that would be septic system, if there's a house back in the back, and that wouldn't be, I don't know that they'd leave enough room with the setback regulations for to put a house there. Probably the three across the front with one in, in the rear, but I don't think it would fit on that leg that's coming to the south. The septic system in that would be unobtrusive, be natural, and be, had to maintain that way, could not be built upon. We do not have the plans now. As some of you know, it's a long process to go through the county for approval, so we're in that process right now.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, we had our, remind me who gave the first. Okay, Burks, and your second. Okay. Roll call vote, Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commiss, Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
And my vote's aye, it passed.
Thank you.
12A, beer permit for Jefferson's Restaurant HG, HG LLC, located at 2431 Fairview Boulevard. Owner, Andrew Deal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. And is the owner present? Okay, thank you. Do we have, did they meet all the requirements? Ms. Johnson? Okay.
Head of Mayor?
Yes.
We could get the owner up here, so we could find out for sure when he's gonna open, he'll make this town extremely happy.
Be big news, yeah.
We've heard coming soon, coming soon, but now you need something from us, so maybe we wanna know.
Will be open very soon. We'll, our grand opening, we're hoping, is gonna be the 17th of September. But keep an eye on the parking lot, because we might try to open the doors up next week if we get everything ready to go.
Outstanding. I appreciate the information.
My only recommendation is have it ready.
It'll be ready, it'll be ready.
You tend to get a lot of personal opinions.
Yeah, I know, I know, we're ready for those.
Okay, well, we're so excited to have you.
Great, great, thank you, we're excited to be here.
Okay, so we'll go to a roll call vote. Commissioner Burks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lu, Lucas?
Aye.
And my vote's aye. It passed. 12B, ordinance number 2018-18.
An ordinance to amend the city of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for Tax Map 46, Parcel 87, consisting of 48-plus acres located at 2451 Fairview Boulevard from a RS40 low-density residential zoning district to a CG commercial general zoning district. Move to approve.
Mayor, I believe this is the Sullivan property that was on Planning Commission last time? And I'll need to recuse myself.
Okay. So we have a first, anybody else with a second? No second? Okay, I'll give it a second. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just, I feel like this is a pretty big piece of property for us to rezone until we have our comp plan kind of in place, it's what we want the land used to look like, and, and I just have a real concern about that.
Okay. Do you, Kristin, can you give us any direction on, have, do they have plans in sight?
No, Mayor, there's, there's no, there's no plans. The, the heirs of the, of the orig, the family heirs of the property owner just decided that they would like to make it more saleable, and felt that with the amount of road frontage along the commercial corridor there on 100, and, and there's, you know, Jingo Market immediately, immediately north, just off Glen Haven, and some surrounding commercial across the street, they just felt like it was appropriate and desirable for a potential buyer to make, to, to want it for a commercial property. If it, you know, if it were to be purchased, if it were rezoned commercially, it would have to come in for a full-blown site plan to the, to the Planning Commission. And if they were to do any, any kind of mixed use, you know, a commercial with some residential, it would have to be done as a, as a mixed-use pud, which would actually come back to this board first, and then to the Planning Commission. So there'd be a number of, of additional steps that the project would have to, would have to go through for review.
Okay, so for clarification again, all the houses around it are residential, across the street, is that what you're, I thought you said adjacent?
Jingo Market, right, is right here with Glen Haven, so, and then you have midpoint, I believe it's midpoint, with the lawn, the laundromat, which used to, it's got Trina's Stitchery, we've got those in here, this is the trailer park. And then you've got the Middle Tennessee Electric Substation, and then, yeah, we've got, you know, this is all older residential in here, so.
So actually, the only thing that is touching is Jingo Market?
Directly touching, yeah, and then across the street.
But then also across the street is residential?
There is, well, we have a, we've got a, we have a trailer park, which is, it is residential, but it's, it's looked at more commercially because it's a more, more multifamily. And then you would potentially say that's industrial, because it's a substation, and then, yeah, we've got some commercial in here, so.
But then on down Way 100 Highway, and there are houses right there across the street, the duplex and, and I know the Wilsons?
There's a, there's a few houses in duplex there.
So residential?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Lucas?
Correct me if I'm wrong, on Cumberland, that last piece of property on Highway 100 in Cumberland, is that not commercial?
It is, it's, it's vacant, but it's, it is owned commercial.
But it is owned commercial, correct?
Yes.
So basically, if you go from Cumberland back up, going north, I guess, you would have commercial, and then three residential, and then potentially, commercial, commercial.
Correct.
Now, are you talking on Cumberland, right where the middle school, across from the middle school?
Correct, actually, right, can you point, yeah, right there, that piece of property is commercial?
Uh, it's not, it's not commercial, unless y'all did it when I wasn't here. That was, they tried to get it approved commercial, but it failed.
At the corner of Cumberland and 100 is commercial?
That, I've just seen the sign.
The sign says commercial, but they're advertising it as commercial. They did come in front of the board several years ago, but it was due to the same reasoning that Commissioner Rainey mentioned, is without knowing what they were gonna do, and that was directly across from the middle school. It once, it's zoned in commercial, if they meet our building standards, you really don't have any means to stop, you know, a certain building, with it being across from the middle school, it was a concern at the time.
Okay.
I think it says potential commercial, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's potential, it's...
That's why I asked, because I wasn't...
I mean, you'll have to double-check, but that's what I remember. So, and so that would leave, if we did zone this commercial, it would leave three houses residential in between, even if that last one on Cumberland ever came before us.
And then plus, it backs up to all those houses on the property of the houses on Cumberland, those first three or four houses on Cumberland, that property backs up to their, back of their property, correct?
It does. One nice thing about this property, though, is it has a lot of trees, so at the Planning Commission level, you could protect those residential homes.
But if we zone it commercial, how much, how much protection do we have in there for noise and traffic and...
It, it would just depend on what it is. I mean, it's same, same thing like Fred's and Jingo Market and all those, they back up to residential. You know, my only concern, I hear what you're saying, and I was actually one that did not want the Cumberland because of the issue with the schools and losing that control. My, not to say that that's not gonna be appropriate commercial zoning, just where it is, you know, it very well may be, but with the comprehensive plan coming forward, I do think it would be better to consider it after the comprehensive plan's done and the direction is decided. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, just, one of the things that I, one of the takeaways that I had from the comprehensive plan kickoff was, is that, you know, historically, a lot of the property down 100, it was envisioned that it would be commercial property, both in the 2020 plan and, and based on what was said at that meeting, would likely be a part of the 2040 plan. And, and I believe he even said that, that we've been pretty consistent in how we've done that, that it's, that it has sort of, you know, fallen into that trend of, of commercial property being, you know, where you would expect commercial property to be, which is down the main thoroughfare through Fairview. You know, you have a substantial amount of commercial property to the north of, of that, I mean, you have pretty much everything, everything to the north that's on the same side of the street, from Jingo Market, then you have Fred's, then you have some restaurants, the, I think the Pizza Hut and the Taco Bell are there, and then, of course, you, you get on down and you're still into commercial property. There where, I guess, maybe France is up through, the old France, if, for those that remember, property is still up there to the, to the right, and then the apartment complexes, which is, I understand, are sort of treated like the, the trailer park, and it's kind of considered commercial property, even though it's multi, multifamily residential property. So, a significant portion of the property to the north of that, heading toward town center, is already commercial property. It seems to me that any comprehensive plan that we would have, it would stand to reason that that would be likely a, a use for this property, that it would be commercial property. Mr. Collins may expand on that, but I, I can't imagine that it wouldn't be.
There, there will be a couple of factors at play as we go forward. In the short term, with the improvements to Cumberland, Crowcut Highway 100, the city's gonna have to purchase roughly 300 feet of right-of-way on the east side of 100. From the intersection, the lot that was discussed, whether it's residential or commercial, currently is residential by our zoning, all four of those lots are residential. As you move from Cumberland toward the subject property that we're talking about, we're gonna have to acquire... we're gonna have to acquire roughly 350 feet of right-of-way on the east side of the road or the same side of the road. We're gonna require, we're gonna obtain right-of-way on the, at the Highway 100 frontage of those two lots nearest to Cumberland. We know that's a part of the, of the Cumberland 100 improvement project.
The two lots that are nearest Cumberland, is that what you said?
Yes, sir. The, the, the property that was discussed, whether it's a commercial or residential, it's currently residential. But we're gonna have to obtain right-of-way along Highway 100 for that. On the other side of the intersection, in phase one, we're going to purchase on the same side of the road in the, in the vacant, the vacant roadway or the vacant lot that looks like it's on the corner there, just to the left of the church, if you're familiar with it. We're going to purchase an additional 350 feet on that side of the road as well. That's phase one. Secondary to that is we're, we're aware that Highway 100 from Cumberland to 840 is gonna be widened from two and a half lanes to five lanes, likely within the next five to six years. At least the process will start as a part of the improved act approved by the legislature last year. So as we get into this discussion, just, just consider whether or not there's any action taken on this tonight. The, we've, it's been confirmed to us that Highway 100 will be substantially changed south of Cumberland as we go forward from two and a half lanes to five lanes and potentially change north toward the subject property by at least the widening of, of the improvement area for the intersection improvements that we do. Whether or not that factors in, that, that's gonna have some, gonna have some impact on the longevity of those four lots being residential. Likely it decreases the longevity of those lots being residential for the long term.
So just so I understand and digest what you said, in all likelihood, once those, once those improvements are made, we're gonna see most, if not all, of this property come in as commercial property.
I would be, I would be very surprised if that's not the case, long-term, depending on where we are. Yes, sir, that's correct. Again, no, that's no bearing on any decision you had tonight, is, but absolutely, yes. Long-term, that's, that's going to come to that intersection in some form.
Well, I kind of, I feel like there's certain, there's things, there's a lot of things they can do with getting the zoning. It doesn't have to be commercial only. And I do feel like there's a lot of trees around where if something did come into the planning commission. And most, I've seen in most cases, when big box seats come in, they need more land. So a fear of, would that be, you know, what it's gonna be, we could only guess, but who knows, it's a nice size piece of land, but I, I do think you could protect the, the residentials.
Also, can I ask, on the backside of that property where you can see that there's some forest there already, it looks like, is that similar in nature to some of the other areas down that side of the road where the topography is, is, it's sort of a hillside there?
Yeah, there's actually, this, this roughly 50 acres has quite a few topographical challenges that will limit exactly what, you know, the scope of what can go there. And there's some floodplain, there's some, some, you know, some, some slope, whether you consider it a steep slope or not. There's definitely some, some things that will, will come into play and as far as the commercial to residential on three sides, the, the regulations that we have in place currently require a transitional buffer between commercial to residential. So there, there would have to be areas either left intact or, you know, heavily planted to provide a, a barrier between those two different types of land uses.
Kristen, where is the floodplain?
There is, it sort of runs through here. You can actually see there's kind of a, a natural discoloration of the. There, there's a farm pond, I believe, that was built in here, but the FEMA, FEMA flood panel actually does show some, some small areas of floodplains, so. So that, that would just have to be, it, it has to be separated from and we require, you know, a, a buffer from, a stream buffer, basically, from, from those areas, so. They wouldn't be able to, so they, basically, they wouldn't be able to fully develop this property to the size that you see in front of you for a number of reasons.
Can you define small areas of floodplain? I mean, when you say, I mean, how many acres of floodplain?
Um, not, I, I can't, I couldn't guess. I mean, there, it, it is shown on, again, the, one of the FEMA flood panels as being an area of, of floodplain, but subject to small periodic flooding. I mean, it's not in, it's not in a, it's not a floodway where you cannot do any development. I mean, I could, I could certainly get, I'd have to pull, pull the flood map for you, but.
Well, and we have families, members here, I mean, I guess, can somebody tell us whether or not the property floods? Anybody, nobody, uh, nobody's here to, as, there, I was like.
The real estate agent, Mr. Hardcastle is there.
Okay, yeah.
According to the owners, it doesn't flood. But that's, that's, that's not scientific.
Okay. Okay, well.
We don't know where it pre, pre, see water in there.
Okay, and it may be a section that, on their property that they may not access a whole lot. But my standards normally is, and just, I'm speaking out loud for the citizens, my standards is if it touches commercial property, then typically I would not hold somebody back from bringing it in as commercial. And in this scenario, it does meet that standard. The residential does concern me all around it, but it does have enough, you know, trees that I think that they could be protected. So to deny them their right to have their property rezoned, in this case, I could justify why I would rezone it. And with what Mr. Collins said, what the future holds of Highway 100, to make them come back and pay the fee may not be the best direction. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think it's a, personally, for what my opinion is worth, I think it's a great place for commercial. As far as the buffer behind in the houses, I think you're gonna get a greater, I'm just looking at a satellite map right now. I think you're gonna get a better buffer at this place than you do at going up as high as Dirt Cheap, for sure. Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, Fred's, The Dollar Store, or Dollar General. You're gonna have a much bigger buffer between homes than you do at any of those properties, there's other businesses I just named, so. I've always thought it, in driving by it, would be a great place for, for some commercial, so.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
I have one more question, then I promise I'll hush.
Oh, no, you're good. Commissioner Rainey?
So, when, 20 minutes. So, so when we, the vacant lot, the vacant house at the corner of Cumberland and 100 and the Wilson property next door to that, how much will we have to take for the widening of the road? About, kind of, sorta?
Commissioner Rainey, preliminarily, about 50 feet. Comes the length of the lots or the width of the lots as they're on Highway 100?
Okay, I'm done. The end.
Okay, so any other questions? We still have quite a bit of time, no? You said 20, you took it way too long.
That's what the, that's what the city manager always tells us, and it's always two hours, so I thought I would just use that as a reference.
You said terminology. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Cruster?
Aye.
My vote's an aye. Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey?
Aye.
Okay, it carries. 12C?
We'll get our esteemed colleague back.
Should we leave our audience? Commissioner Burks, can you leave your audience and come back to the meeting? Okay, that brings us back to 12C, speed limits. Commissioner Burks?
Thank you.
Don't want you to miss this far.
I can step back outside, I'll discuss this, I'm fine. This is probably the one thing I get asked about by citizens of Fairview. Sometimes not in a positive way, but I don't get asked about the budget, I don't get asked about a lot of things, but the speed limits I get asked about. And there's some concerns that have been brought up. It doesn't seem to be so much what the actual speed is on these roads, it's the number of changes of speeds. Part of that is due to, I believe, the length of Fairview. It's long, it's narrow, it's down Highway 100, down Highway 96. We had some discussions about this at the workshop prior to the meeting. And I think what we would like is to get some more information before we make a decision on this. Try to get some averages as to what the comfortable driving speeds seem to be in these different areas. And after we do that, to see if we can fix this to where it's more comfortable to drive through. And based upon that, I would ask that this be deferred to the next meeting.
Is that long enough to, to do what he's wanting to do? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I believe it is.
Okay. You know, one of the things when we discussed this originally, I recall bringing up the subject of going up and down was gonna appear as a speed trap. But as they talked about in the workshop, that a lot of it is the 35 miles, and we talked about in the original meeting, the 35 miles is mandated to us by T-Dot, is what Mr. Collins, or was, I don't know if mandated the right word to use. They, they told us that in front of the schools, it needed to be 35 at that intersection. So when the changes came in place, it wasn't that needed to be, the signs needed to be put up and it really had been that, but never been posted. So we had to put up the signs, so then it became the discussion of changing. Now, one of the options that was brought up in the meeting was we can keep it a certain amount until you get to the city limits of Fairview or even coming into town where our town area is. But it had, I think what people were complaining, what Mr., Commissioner Burks was talking about, is it's more the fluctuation, which I knew was gonna be a huge concern. But we were gonna have to, it's either everything be 35 from that point all the way through the city and then it could pick up. And, you know, I don't know how many people are gonna be happy with that either. But, so that's where the options are, we understand, even driving it, we all drive the streets of Fairview, that going back and forth. Discuss in the workshop, they brought up the fact of, you know, the chief of police brought up that we're probably going at a consistent rate and you don't even realize it anyway. It's probably not requiring a lot of people to stop and slow down. Through town, you're probably going similar to that rate. So don't know what the solution is, but I just kind of wanted to share some of the discussion and maybe when we come next week, you know, if the citizens want to share with us. Okay, we want it the same, so let's just do it 35 all the way through town. Or we, can we stomach the drop in these sections and then, you know, speed back up? And that's input that we're probably gonna need from y'all, because when it comes down to it is there's certain sections we can't get around because of the schools. We can make it more consistent, but there's gonna be that up and down. Anybody else want to add something I missed, 'cause I came in at the tail end of the workshop?
Thanks, Mayor. If I could, can I put, Chief, can you come up here? I'll put you on the spot. Really quickly, 'cause I know we're deferring this, but I think there was some major misunderstandings of why we did what we did. And what you, for those that couldn't be at the workshop, can you kind of give us like the brief overview of what you explained to us about not being a speed trap and how police is working and those kind of things?
Yeah, Commissioner Burks reached out and I think he was getting some pressure from his constituents, like, is this a speed trap? Some, you know, fluctuation in speeds and stuff. And just asked for some information, I guess, initially was this year versus last year. But what I gave him was five years, because it would give us a more comprehensive look at what actually went on. When Fairview was fully staffed and to 24 personnel in the year of 2013, somewhere in that same eight or nine-month period, was about 320 speeding tickets were what was the norm, was being written. And then the kind of tumultuous time the police department had through the late 2015, early 2016 and the result of 30% of staff being either left or removed from the PD. And then my hiring, I had to bring staff, hire staff back in. Then it was training, so you saw a significant dip in that timeframe. In large, that was staffing and training issues. Then as we get our feet under us and start getting our officers trained and on the shifts, then you start seeing that uptick, which in comparison to that timeframe was about 100 tickets less after you changed your speed limits. So we were 100 tickets less than we were in those, with the speed limits changed. So that immediately negates the speed trap, you know, issue. And then when, when asked for our input, I said, we didn't have any input to begin with when you changed it. And really, it does, it makes, you know, not much difference to us what the speed limit is. If people are gonna speed, they're gonna speed if it's 45 and they do 52, if it's 70, they're gonna do 78. If they choose to do that, they're gonna do it regardless of what the speed is. And the, the majority of our response is, is reactive. We're, we're reactive, like I said in the work session, arrests are up 48%. Calls of service with a report is up 21%, and that's not counting calls of service where no reports taken. So activity from a reactive stance is up. Proactive measures are when you hit that lull, when you got, need something to do to fill the time. And an officer goes down and sets up and runs radar for a while. Largely, that's a suppression tactic, trying to just get the traffic to slow down. Most officers could probably pull over 15 more cars in that timeframe than they do. They select a few, pull them over, and most of those encounters are some sort of verbal warning and, and very rarely in those occasions is a ticket written. But the problem is, is when a person gets a ticket, then they feel like, at that point, because they got the ticket, it was a speed trap and such. But the data shows we're down 100 tickets from those timeframes in comparison to the speed limits as they were before. Largely, you know, the, the really low, I guess, tick in that was due to the, all the turmoil in the department. So now we're, we're kind of back on an upswing, we're still nowhere close to that number because our reactive duties are up more. So largely, that stuff plays more into it than your choice into deciding what that speed limit is. Because really, it's, it's insignificant to us, you pick it, and when we get a chance, we go out and serve the citizens in a way that we try to maintain a safe speed on the streets. And if someone's excessive, then we address that issue. But the, the idea of a speed trap for us to buy more. But the, the idea of a speed trap for us to buy more patrol cars, those speeding tickets, we would have to, I said we wrote two hundred, it would have to be somewhere in the, the range of fourteen or fifteen hundred tickets to start making any significant impact on us buying patrol cars, so that, again, the data negates that completely also. So really, it's just us trying to do good work, go out, and when we get a chance to do proactive measures, do that in a way that we have contact with the public. Many times issue a verbal warning, sometimes we write a citation. And even at that, the, the numbers are down after your change in speed limits.
Well, and I don't really think anybody doesn't think the Police Department shouldn't do what their job, you know what I'm saying? So, and if citizens think that, well, you know, um, I'm sure it's, nobody wants a ticket, but if you're speeding, there's, you know, consequences to all that. I do think that some of the, um, change has to do with, we went from a town that had one, um, traffic light to now we have three in the middle of town. And so that's gonna affect the, um, rate of travel through our community. So, um, that could've had some to do with you seeing the dips of the change. It just, I think what needs to happen is, A, we're gonna do, as Commissioner Burks suggested, but I think citizens need to just consider what, um, you know, what's a better way. If you have suggestions, we'd be glad to listen to them. But, um, if you don't want the up and down through town, it's thirty-five, 'cause we had, our, we're sandwiched between, um, two schools and going, and then starting on ninety-six. We could do thirty-five through there, and then pick up the speed, um, down the right. And that, if that's easier for everybody to remember, is to be consistent, then, you know, maybe that's what we should do. And then decide from that point, what is the, a good rate going out Highway one hundred and ninety-six to get the commuters, um, to where they need to be. So, anyway, um, do we need to make a motion to defer?
Can I ask?
Yes, I'm sorry.
One more thing for clarification. Uh, when you said, what, two hundred, three hundred tickets, what timeframe was that in again?
Commissioner Burks asked from the time you passed the actual, uh, uh, speed limit changes, which was like December twenty-first, and I ran that to August twenty-first, so it was during that period, and I compared that the same timeframe with the previous five years. The 2013, 2014 was running somewhere around three hundred and twenty speeding tickets during that same nine-month period. As 2015 comes about, it starts to dip. 2016 is very low, and then, uh, it turns back up, and I think we were around the two fifty mark during this time, which is, you know, two twenty, two thirty, whatever it was, was almost a hundred tickets different. And, and from the 2013, 2014 era.
Good, yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor members of the commission just kinda put that in perspective from the citation standpoint. That's an average of one speeding ticket per day in, in the, in the city. So just kinda as we get into this thing, I, I understand that speed limits are a concern. But I, I think we're talking two different issues generally. I think speed limits are a concern, and there is a perception based on those speed limits that there's a speed trap, um, that, that does that, but the numbers just don't bear that out. I think we, I think it's healthy to look at the speed limits, um, but I want the, the citizens in the community at large to be secure in the fact that that's, that's not a significant resource, a significant effort. As I said, this, there's been no concentrated effort on the part of the board, the city, the Police Department, or any other group to promote or somehow facilitate that thing. We're still at one speeding ticket per day on an average at the city's peak, which was three years ago. So we want to review the speed limits and make sure number paramount is our safety. Second is perception of that safety. Um, we'll make sure we move forward with something that makes sense from a safety standpoint, and also ensure the public that, that we're not somehow manipulating a concern for safety into an opportunity to somehow increase revenue or improve, or increase contacts. It's just not, just not there, so.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Real quick, can we also, we've, we've got some data on the speeding tickets. Can we get some on the actual, um, accidents during that same timeframe?
We can, yes, sir.
That would be useful.
We'll have those for you at the same time we have the other, the other information that's been requested.
Okay, if I can get a motion, um, I, I think we had a motion on the floor to defer. If I can get a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner, um, Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
And then my vote's aye. Okay, it carries. Twelve D, Resolution twenty-seven dash eighteen.
Abolishing the exist, existing tree commission and park commission.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just quickly, I know, um, there was some discussion earlier about if we did this, and we established the Parks and Landscape Board as, as is part of the next resolution, um, about representation on that board. And I, I will say this, one of the things that, that came up at the last Park Board meeting that, our Park Commission meeting that I attended was, is that, we actually was going to be losing Mr. Edmondson. And that, as a result of that, I think maybe Mr. Hendrix was also part of the Friends, that he would actually just take that plate, take the place of Mr. Edmondson as the representative for the Friends. But then now, of course, Mr. Hendrix, did I say Hendrickson or Hendricks? It's Hendrix, sorry. That Mr. Hendrix, um, he has resigned. So that leaves us with no representation on that board, if it continued to exist, um, from, from the, uh, Friends. At least at that meeting, it was indicated that no one wanted to take that seat from the Friends, that there was no interest. I, I guess it's really a question to you guys, is there interest from the Friends to, for someone to be? Okay. Uh, Al's pointing. Okay, well, I, I was just curious, because that, that had come up at that meeting, and I didn't know if, if that was something that, i- if there was actually any interest, so thank you.
What is the vision of this, um, board, if you wanna share? I mean, somebody had to have a direction. Like, how would it look? How many seats? Are they gonna be designated, or just at large?
Mayor, there's a second resolution of the next item on the agenda that addresses that. I'd be glad to go into both and kinda clarify that. Keep in mind, the motion, the second on the floor, is the abolishment of the Park Board and the Tree Board as they exist. That's the, the resolution you have. The next resolution, um, explains the creation of the Parks and Landscape Board. And it's, it's made up as part of Item twelve E on the agenda as a seven-member board, as opposed to two five-member boards. It would be one seven-member board. And it's drafted as, um, one member from the Board of Commissioners, who is the current member from the Tree Board. It's made up of the four remaining members of the Tree Board, and the two remaining members of the Park Board currently, um, Mr. White and Dr. Rice. Um, I'm not sure if of the four members of the current Tree Board, any of those members are members of the Friends of Bowie Park. I'm, I'm not aware of, of that.
There, yes.
There.
So if that, if that's the case, then that matter would be, would be resolved with the, with the next item on the agenda. Now, we could, as we get into that, simply restate that to be three members of the current Tree Board, one member of the current Park Board, two members of the current, I mean, one member of the current Tree Board. Let's back up. Four, three members of the current Tree Board.
That is hard.
One member of the, I'm a finance person, I don't have a calculator. Three members of the current Tree Board, one member of the current Friends of Bowie Park Board, although it's not an official board of the city, two members, the two remaining members of the current Park Board, and one member from the Board of Commissioners, in this case Commissioner Rainey, who serves in the seat on the Tree Board. So, if it pleases the council, when we get to the next item on the agenda, I will requalify, I'll requantify those positions to ensure that as a part of the Parks and Landscape Board, the, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park are specifically identified as a, as an appointment member to the board.
So, Mr. Rowley, you're already on the Tree, the Tree Board. Okay, I, I didn't realize that. So, so essentially, we're not having to add somebody from, from the Friends, we're just simply designating a spot.
Yes, sir, we just simply qualify that spot.
Okay.
And I apologize for the math, I don't have a calculator.
Well, sadly, it took me that long to get down to that section, so it's all good, for I could read it for myself. Couldn't remember. Okay, so any other discussion on abolishing the board? Okay, do we have our, um, we had our motions. Um, we had start roll call with, um, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
And my vote's aye. Okay, that brings us to, uh, new business, twelve E, Resolution twenty-eight dash eighteen.
Establishing the Parks and Landscape Board. Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second. Any more discussion?
Can I, I need, can I withdraw that, that motion and restate it, if you withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw my second.
I think that makes sense to do, it, it, move to approve with the changes that we just discussed in the previous resolution with, with there being three members.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
The, the way I was, the way I was gonna draft it, if there's a motion to approve, then, and a second, if it goes forward, then my suggestion would be the current BOC member assigned to the Tree Board would be the BOC member assigned to the Parks and Landscaping Board. The current two members of the Park Board would be assigned to the Park and Landscaping Board. Three members of the current Tree Board would be assigned to the Park and Landscape Board. And one member of the Friends of Bowie Nature Park Board would be assigned to the Park and Landscape Board, and that member would be voted on by the Friends of Bowie Nature Park Board members.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any other discussion?
I believe there's a question from, go ahead.
Actually, that's a great question, and I think that we probably should designate a seat for, um, planning, just because it has so much to do with the trees.
But I, I, I think that really, according to the instructions that exist now for the Tree Commission, that things from the Tree Commission go directly to the board. I know there's a process of trying to redo that, but I think that, that right now, that everything goes to the BOC. So, the plan, it does not go directly to the Planning Commission, so. I mean, we have a Planning Commission member on the board at this point in time, that I would think she would go ahead and serve out her term. But should there be a stipulation that a Planning Commission member be on that board?
Well, the only, I mean, I see your point. Um, the only concerns I would have by not having that is, um, a Planning Commission, um, member is going to know a lot, um, about residential development and commercial development that might be coming. Not that, that you wouldn't, but sometimes if it's already zoned correctly, the board may not ever know about a subdivision. The Planning Commission would approve residential stuff. The only times that it has to come in front of us is if they're asking for some kind of, you know, um, rezoning or annexation. We don't see everything that the Planning Commission sees, if it's already to city standards. If it met our zoning requirements and the city, um, building requirements, we wouldn't necessarily see it. Go ahead.
My suggestion as a part of this would be not to require, as a part of this resolution, that a member of the Planning Commission be assigned to the Parks and Landscaping Board, and I can explain why. The Parks and Landscaping Board, as it exists, is advisory to the Board of Commissioners. There is also, uh, has been a request in the past that we, aside from requirements that we have the mayor and, or, or BOC member and/or the mayor on the Planning Commission, the effort historically has been to include as many participants in the city's boards as are available. And if you have a member of the Planning Commission also serve as a member of the Parks and Landscape Board, you've effectively, effectively taken two seats available for service from some other member. Third, if you get to such time that the Park and Landscaping Board becomes advisory to the Planning Commission, then that's going to be one person with two votes, which i- in my opinion, would not be advisable as a member, as a matter of voting for practice that can become policy, either for the city or the Planning Commission. So my suggestion would be have those members at large. If it turns out that someone appointed to the Park and Landscape Board later is also a member of the Planning Commission, that will be a matter for the BOC, and certainly within your right. But I would, I would suggest not requiring that as a function of this board, simply because you don't know the future of the, of the board itself.
Okay, so, um, so that means the Planning Commis, or the Board of Commissioners won't get to vote, because they would be, um, doing the same thing you just said. They would be voting, um, here, and then voting at the, um, Board of Commissions.
Again, Parks and Landscape is advisory to the BOC.
Correct.
As it exists today. If at some point in the future, it becomes advisory to the Planning Commission, and you have a requirement that a member of the Planning Commission serve on the Parks and Landscape Board, then that person's voted, that person takes two votes.
And that's the same thing as a Board of Commissioner. So if that's the case, then would, why wouldn't we just have the Board of Commissioners advisory, you know, board member without a vote? I mean, if that's a concern.
I don't vote.
But there's no provision that you could not vote.
Correct.
You're, you're a voting member of this thing. If you have a seven member, if you're voting, unless someone votes, unless someone clearly states that they've abstained, a silent vote is in the affirmative. So if you have a matter that's three to three, and one member doesn't vote, it's four to three, four to three in favor of the, of the matter before you. The issue at hand regarding the BOC and the Planning Commission is, that's mandated by, that's set out by state code. It is a part of that. That's not something you're required to do. So as a matter of service to both boards, my suggestion would be that you not require a member of the Planning Commission. Not that you can't appoint a member of the Planning Commission, 'cause you certainly could, but forever's a long time. And if we don't know the future of the board, I would suggest that you make it in such a way that it's flexible in favor of the BOC.
Yes, Commissioner Lu, um, hello, Burks.
Two points I'd bring up. First point is, we have a hard time filling seats for boards. And when a member of the Planning Commission is required to sit there, that helps fill a seat. So I just throw that out there. But, but I understand what you're saying. But could we request that it be a non-voting member be appointed from the Planning Commission to this? So, non-voting, but you still get the benefit of that information from the Planning Commission point of view.
In, in favor of that, my, my only concern with that is now you have an eight-member board that one's a non-voting member that kind of, that kind of muddles out a little bit. If I were going to do that, then I would request of the Planning Commission that they vote to have one person to attend the Park and Landscape Board. Because if they're a non-voting member, then that just simply is an appointment by the Planning Commission to attend those meetings versus an odd number. I mean, you could do either way you want. to attend those meetings versus an odd number, I mean, you could do either way you wanted to, but I would.
I, I get what you're saying, and that's, the only reason I bring, brought up that, you know, the chair, if that was a concern, then, that we need to look at, then let's look at, you know, all of it, I do think though, you know, you certainly can invite the tree board to, if there's open seats, to put in their application, but maybe not to require, if that's the direction you want to go, but I'd like to go back of why don't we have people wanting to serve on boards, you know, that may be a question we want, want to ask sometimes, because, you know, we really shouldn't have long gaps, and so maybe we should look at why they don't want to serve. So, anyways, we have a motion on the table, any other discussion? Okay, let's see if I get it right, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Or it's Lucas, what, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And then my vote's aye, it carries. New business, 12F, resolution 29-18, fire truck financing.
Move to approve.
Okay.
We got a first and second, any discussion? Mr. Collins, if you want to update?
Mayor, just briefly, there, as, as you're aware, any, anytime the city, if we already have debt, takes on debt, there's an approval process that goes on, go, we must go through with the state, we've, we've met every requirement that we have, we bid the project, we've taken the bids, we accepted the bids, and adopted a resolution approving First Bank as the lender in this, the state of Tennessee requires that we submit something to them for their approval, the form of the document that you have before you is referenced as a bond issue, this is not a bond issue, this is a ten-year straight financing, I've communicated this back and forth with the state, the state provided the documents you have for consideration tonight, and has approved its format as has been filled out, if this is approved tonight, we simply submit this to the state, I'll do that tomorrow, they've let me know that that's a 48-hour approval process, once we get that back, we'll move forward with First Paint, sign all the documents, and move forward for the fire truck, which we anticipate to be on the ground here in Fairview in about 21 days.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote's aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to 12F, resolution 30-18, a resolution requesting the election of a court clerk to be added on the Fairview Tennessee municipal election held in conjunction with the November 26, 20, oh, I'm sorry, I can see the Vice Mayor, that I read that wrong, November 6, 2018, state of Tennessee general election. Yes, yeah.
So I was just thinking, when he was reading it, that that was something that we wouldn't even be taking up tonight, am I, am I wrong?
No, sir, you're correct, when we got to the work session, so we, we would simply request that this matter be deferred until such date is, that we can actually bring something forward, we, we don't have a calendar way to meet this obligation, although it's an action that we all are aware needs to take place, we don't, simply because of schedule and have the ability to make that work for the November 6 date, and we'll bring back a study and information to facilitate a future date for that consideration.
Okay.
So we would just simply ask for a defer until a future date undefined.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
And my vote's aye.
Thank you.
Item 13, city manager's items for discussion.
Mayor, allow, it'll be about 20 minutes, actually, I don't have anything, I apologize.
Come on, okay, city attorney, okay. That will take us to the mayor and commissioners' communication, Commissioner Rainey.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to remind everybody of Nature Fest this weekend, come out on Saturday, 10 to 5, this is another one of those events that we do here in Fairview that are great times for the community to kind of come together and hang out, and eat, and listen to good music, and all those good things, and just enjoy hanging out and fellowshiping with each other, so I encourage you to come out, I look forward to seeing you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Burks.
Couple of things, if we could go back to the annexation of the Hudson Family revocable living trust property, couple of questions, I had to sit in timeout outside, and while I was out there, I was speaking to some of our, our neighbors who live in the county, and they had a couple of questions, and hopefully we can get some clarification on that, not this one, it was the other property, I apologize, that one, yes, when the request for annexation was originally made, was, is there a requirement, and I believe there is, that we send notice to all the adjoining property owners at that time?
No, when the plan of services is approved by the planning commission.
Okay.
Which is what the resolution states.
Okay, so the first notice they would have received under annexation is of the public hearing for tonight, is that correct? Okay, and what size signs are we required to post, or are we on the property itself to notify people?
The, per the state regulations, there, the owner is required to post the resolution for annexation on three places on the property, which were given by city staff to the property owner.
So there's no requirement that we actually put up a sign saying annexation requested?
No.
So they would have had to see this little bitty piece of paper, and go onto private property, arguably trespassing, in order to see what this is?
Correct, I mean, they also would receive a letter.
Correct, but assuming they don't get their letter, something happens, they would, they would have no way of knowing.
It's also in the, advertised in the paper, right, for public notice.
When we do a rezoning request, we put up a sign.
Right, that's part of the, the zoning ordinance regulations in Article 16.
And can we adjust it for annexations as well, to require the actual sign go up?
Sure, we could look at, it would be a, just, it would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance under public, public notice, which we do for board of zoning appeals, rezoning requests, so the planning commission would vote on it, and then it would come to this board here.
I think it might be appropriate that we give a little bit better notice on annexations, so I would request for the next meeting that we put on the agenda, a resolution to require a larger sign similar to our rezoning request, showing that there's been a request for annexation, I think it's, I think we need to be good neighbors, and make sure everyone has appropriate notice, and request it perhaps when the actual request for, or annexation comes forward, so everyone has plenty of notice. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure we, we were doing it correctly, because it seems that we do it sooner with rezonings than we do with annexations.
Right, the process, the process is different, and we just, we follow the state laws requirements, basically.
But we can go above and beyond.
Sure, we could.
So to be clear, are we talking about amending the subdivision regulations, and the advertisement requirements in the subdivision regulations, are we talking about advertisement requirements?
This, I believe.
Outside of that.
It would have to be outside of that, because subdivision regulations wouldn't take place, or be binding until it's actually in the city, I believe.
Right, it would, the, the zoning ordinance covers all sorts of requirements for public notice, that the, basically that the zoning administrator, or I guess you could say the city planner, make, takes care of, so, whether it's board of zoning appeals, notices for a variance or a rezoning request, we, we could treat it the same way that, you know, that when, when we receive an, a notice for annexa, an annexation request, that a sign be placed, you know, on the property within so many days of receiving the application.
I think that'll work, again, I just want to make sure that we're good neighbors to everybody, whether, because what we do affects, even though they're not citizens of Fairview, we do affect them, so, they at least deserve to have the notice, and enough time to do, for whatever reason, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Yeah, just, just quickly, Commissioner Burks was mentioning the sign, I know when my, when I had an annexation request, we actually did put the sign out, I don't, I don't know if we just don't do that on every annexation request, but there was a, not only the signs posted on trees on the property, but there was also the, the larger sign, I think we just, we talked about changing that a while back, and I think we did, we got some new signs, but anyway, it was out, that's all I had, I just wanted to share that.
As a follow-up to that, just to make sure, we're, we're walking through this and we're all on the same page, because we want to get this right, of course, is we go through this, and this is a Mr. Potter question that we don't have to answer tonight, but if it's an annexation specifically, that's a property outside of the city limits for which we have no regulatory authority as an ordinance standpoint, so if we go through and we require it as a part of the subdivision regulations, then we could report back to the BOC that yes, that matter was followed through, as a part of that thing, as opposed to a BOC resolution or ordinance that would not be enforceable on its own at that, we, we won't comply, we just want to make sure we do it in such a way that we can report back.
My question is, is why do we need to do either one, why can't, when someone makes an application, why can't that just be part of the application process, that it's noticed to them on the application, that there's going to be a sign placed on your property to give notice to the surrounding property owners and others, I mean, would that not work? In other words, why do we have to make it an actual provision of any subdivision reg or ordinance or anything else, why couldn't it just be, I mean, somebody is coming and making an application for the property to be rezoned, we're going to put the sign on the, the property in question?
I mean, I see what he's meant, what he, what he means, it's technically city staff can't really go on private property, I mean, we could request as part of the application that the property owner put a sign on the property.
Well, somebody went on my property and put a sign, I mean, that's what I'm saying, there was a sign there, somebody put it there, I didn't put it there.
That, that would have been for rezoning.
No, I didn't, I didn't rezone, I annexed.
So the city put a sign on your property as a part of an annexation request?
Which I requested, so obviously I didn't have a problem with it, I'm asking that my property be annexed, I mean, but there was a sign on my property, that's what I'm saying.
We believe we have a remedy, let us look into that, we want to accomplish the goal, but we, we think there's a remedy there that we may be able to address.
Absolutely, we'll follow up.
Whatever the simple way, whether we're saying, if you want it, if you want to bring this request before us, then you need to put the sign out, or however.
Understood, we'll make sure we follow up and get it correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and so you're, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, and then I don't have anything tonight, actually, so if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned, thank you.